Procedural question. Should I be seeing whatever 15 tiles of people? Or if I don't see them on my screen, does that mean they just phoned in or something?
Um, you should have seen nine tiles.
I see nine.
Yeah.
But the list of people on the right says 20 people in the meeting.
Yeah.
So Lisa, if we want to start the meeting, maybe we could at the beginning of it, talk about the logistics of the screen.
Yes, we are ready, we are on and ready to go, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Before I ask Lisa to call the roll, um, I would like to introduce our newest Met War member, Brad Falcone. Uh, we left behind this kind of, uh, messy introduction. So Brad, I've called Brad for a long time. Could I interrupt? Could all of you who are not board members, please mute yourself? Thank you. How to do that? Thank you. Brad's wife, Ellen, was on the, on the Plan Commission Board with me for some time, way back, way back before Maria. And so we've gotten to know each other for some, and so Brad, why don't you give us a little bit of your background?
Sure. Well, I guess first thing to know about me is more people know my wife in Willmet than they know me, as reflected in Reinhardt's comment. But we've been residents of Willmet for over 30 years. Our oldest son is about to become a neighbor of Reinhardt's in a few weeks with his family. I'm an attorney and had practice in commercial litigation for 40 years, retired last year. Everybody wants to know what I do now. Um, I do a lot of work at Northwestern University, but I also am a woodworker. So I build furniture, something I've always wanted to do full-time. Um, let's see, what else about me? Um, I don't think that's really about, about it. Um, I've known Reinhardt since my wife has known him and I, he and I have gotten to know each other on the train over the years. And when he was looking for someone to join the board, he came to me and it was, it's my pleasure to join.
You're welcome. Uh, Bob Sermon, can you hear us? You seem to be going on and off on the, on the video. Bob?
Oh, yeah.
Seems to have trouble with...
Uh-huh.
No, that's not Bob. Now, we have, we have nine, I see nine people on the screen, so maybe Bob can, but he can't even hear us, can he?
I'm trying to email him, see if, uh, that might help. Okay. Yeah, I'm trying to work with Mr. Felton to get him in.
Is Ryrie Felton coming in?
We're working on it, he's not quite there.
Well, while you're doing that, I think we should proceed since we're on the air, right?
Yes.
Um, can you, uh, Ms. Roberts, can you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
It's Norick.
Here.
Mr. Sermon? Listen, we may not... Um, Ms. Joe Urban?
Here.
Chairman Schneider?
Here. Okay, uh, as you can tell, this me, this meeting is being conducted remotely. Yeah, Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the Corona, uh, coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. Our, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this evening, we are conducting our business in compliance with the state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live in our local cable access Channel 6. It is also being broadcast on the internet, on YouTube Live, and on the URL for that To participate in the meeting, you can join Microsoft Teams, visit the village's website at www.wilmet.com, and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and, and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel 6 or on YouTube, and call into the meeting along you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225, 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 60413155, 602413155. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live, in the Teams chat, and in emails to com@willmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comments to the village board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes, as we typically do. For our meeting guests, joined, joining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and applications for special use. Based on the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based upon whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based on whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on July 14th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendation. There is one small exception, if the board, if this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application. In order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five, village board members must vote to approve it, rather than a simple majority of four. Uh, there's one other, uh, peculiarity to our proceedings which is, of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by majority vote. We operate instead by turn of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on any given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Now, I think we have, I guess, there's just four of us present. Bob Sermon?
Yeah, I'm back. I got disconnected, so I didn't respond to the roll call, but I'm here.
Okay, so we have... He can participate via orally too, is that correct?
Uh, we need the video, but I, I see Bob, I don't know if everybody else does.
I don't...
I see him.
And, um, and Ryrie here.
Where are you, Bob? Oh, I see you. Okay, good, good. So we have, we have five members present, so we will need four, four of the five present to, to, to approve.
Oh, there are five, I don't, I only see four.
Six. Yeah.
What's, what?
Oh, okay, I just don't, I don't see him, the others.
See, I have Bob, Bob Sermon, Brad Falcone, Maria, and Christine Norick, right? And me.
And Ryrie. Ryrie's dialing in.
Oh, okay.
He's dialing in?
No, no, he's, he's here, somewhere.
Okay.
He's on.
Ryrie, do you have your video on?
Uh, yeah.
There you go.
Turn it off, turn it back on.
Yeah, we need, yeah, we would need it on, yep, perfect.
Okay, so now, now we have six, if I count correctly.
Yes.
Um, so we will need four of the six, obviously. Um, so since we do not have all members yet of the board present on this eve, this evening, any applicant who are scheduled to come before us tonight have the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for an applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is July 1. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive comments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present that evening to which your case has been continued. The, the cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published address. Uh, when your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of reviews that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the, of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from the village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already started stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant, applicant has a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I, uh, or Lisa, who keeps track of all the attendees, will recognize each attendee and ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, Teams chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are planning here to testify tonight, I would ask you to raise your right hand this time and be sworn. You sworn or affirm that you will tell the truth in this testimony that you are about to give, so please say "I do." You can unmute if you can, but...
I do.
I do.
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Rein, Reinhardt?
Yes.
I don't see John calling. It looks like he's...
He joined the meeting, yeah.
I'm on here, can you hear me?
Oh, okay. I, yeah, I can hear you, John, I just didn't see you.
Okay. So now we have a full house. Thank you very much, all of you. Uh, so I think we can begin. Uh, Ms. Roberts, will you please call our first case of the evening?
Our first case is 2020-Z9-715 Laurel Avenue. This is a request for a 1.55-foot combined side yard stoop and steps setback variation to permit the construction of a new stoop and steps, and a 6.5-foot side yard air conditioner setback variation to permit the relocation of two existing air conditioners. And I, and I do see that, um, I believe both, both parties representing the applicant are here today.
This, Mrs. Bradley, are they here?
Yes, we are.
They are? Go ahead, back here, please.
I'm gonna ask our architect, she'll need to hit the high points where you guys, so we'll do it as we can. So we'll let her start off and we'll fill in the gaps.
Great. Um, good evening, I am Healy Rice, I'm the architect for the project, and I am here with, well, here, sort of, with Brian and Colleen Bradley, who are the homeowners. Uh, we're seeking permission to do two things in conjunction with a remodeling project. Uh, first is to, um, seek permission for a combined side yard setback in order to build a new stoop and steps from a proposed mudroom door to the ground. Uh, the reason we're asking for this request is that the original siding of the house is only a little over three feet from the east, from the west property line, and has a much larger side yard on the wet, on the east side. And the, uh, combined, uh, combined side yard, uh, as a result, uh, we are slightly under what would be required in order to do the stoop and steps. Um, the stoop and steps will be open to the sky, it's just that they're more than two feet off the ground, and therefore we would request permission to be able to put the steps on the side, um, and be able then to have a new walkway that'll access to the garage. Um, the, the side yard setbacks obviously are original to the home, which was built in the 1920s, and this was pretty common, that many of those houses are leaning towards one side rather than centered on the property. In this case, you know, three feet on one side and nine on the other. Um, this has no impact to lighter air on the neighbors, and, uh, the east neighbor is aware of this and has no objection to it. Um, the other request we're making is to relocate two air conditioners that are currently behind a deck that is being torn off, and tuck those on the west side of the property where the family room is offset from the original part of the house. Um, again, we've checked with our west neighbor, they're in favor of this as well. In order to move these, um, into this little nook, um, this would be a request, um, of, I think it's two, uh, sorry, three feet, um, off the property line. It'll be a little bit more than that once we're, we're installed, um, but it slips right into this offset, and that gets them out of the backyard and away from our proposed screen porch, um, that we're constructing presently. Um, again, the neighbor is in favor of this, and there was adequate separation because the west neighbor is similarly farther away on their east side, um, so the intent of the ordinance is satisfied that the separation between the houses is maintained. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
I think it's pretty straightforward, your request.
I just wanted to confirm, uh, whether the, there's an existing series of steps that lead to the current wood deck and...
There, there were, it's been torn off, but there were.
So this in a sense replaces that?
Correct.
Although it may be a little larger. So, and, and the neighbor to the, you just mentioned the neighbor to the west has no objection to the condenser units?
Correct. It, it, they would like them out of the backyard as well, they, they are very avid gardeners and love spending time in their yard, so the farther away from their yard the better.
Any questions through the, any other questions for the applicant?
Here I can make a motion if you'd like.
Well, we'll just close, uh, uh, close the testimony and, uh...
Yeah, yeah.
And we will ask for a motion.
All right, we need to make sure that there's no one else here.
Okay. I can make a motion.
Well, wait, let, let, for a second, I, I forgot, I have to ask whether there's anyone else participating in this call that wants to comment on this application. On Laurel Avenue, hearing or seeing none, we can now...
Can, can I ask a question, Lisa?
Please.
Just looking at the staff report, in the first sentence, it refers to the property on the south side of Laurel, but in the second sentence, it states that it has 50 foot of frontage on Linden. I, I would suggest that we make a correction on that?
Yep.
Good point.
More detail.
And for the record, no comments were submitted on YouTube Live.
Okay, thank you. So I think we are ready to see if anybody would like a motion, let make a motion on this, uh, application.
Um, I can make a motion.
Mr. Sermon? I move, I move to recommend granting a request for a 1.55-foot combined side yard stoop and step setback variation to permit the construction of a new stoop and steps, and a 6.5-foot side yard air conditioner setback variation to permit the relocation of two existing air conditioners at 715 Laurel Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
A second?
Okay, uh, we have a second, so, uh, now, any discussion, further discussion?
Um, I was gonna say it's a pretty straightforward, this is Bob Sermon, uh, pretty straightforward, uh, request, uh, minimal request, um, and it makes sense to relocate the air conditioners, and if, uh, the neighbor doesn't have an issue with it, I think it's a reasonable request, and the stairs are as well. So I can approve this.
I agree with everything that Bob just said.
Okay.
I would add, um, that, I had some qualms about this myself, because they were going from, um, a, a very narrow, narrow lot with, with setbacks that were already a problem, and the air conditioner condensers previously were not, uh, encroaching on the side yard, and the previous steps were not encroaching on the side yard. And the, the only reason that they're doing it is because it's, you know, the design is inconvenient. Um, if the neighbors had any complaints about this at all, I'd feel very differently about it, but I can support it. I just wonder a little bit about future neighbors.
Good, uh, those are good points. I had similar concerns, and I was particularly concerned about the condensing units being so close to the property line to the west. Um, but again, I, I, since they do not object, uh, I can support it as well.
Yeah, I would agree. This is Chris Norick, and I too had concerns with the air conditioning units, because it did seem there were other locations where the units could be placed that would be conforming. But if they have taken the step of, um, you know, reaching up to the neighbor and, um, you know, they don't express those concerns, I too can, you know, support this.
This is John. Um, so, um, we have, in the past, I mean, these, we need air conditioner units, something that we often see come in front of us because of the side setbacks, and this is actually more generous than some of the other ones we could do. Well, if the neighbor has, I mean, this is, you know, there's more, more of a setback here, so, um, the neighbor has no objection, I, I think this is a good location for it. Uh, I think it meets all the standards of review.
And this is Brad. I, I would agree with everything that's been said at this point.
Okay, um, having heard from all of the board members, uh, I think we can all for a vote. Ms. Roberts, could you call for a vote?
Yes. Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
And Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Felton?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
The chairman votes yes, as well. So this will go as a positive recommendation to the village board, which meets on, I think we had it before, July 20, correct me if I'm wrong, July 21?
July 14.
14.
Thank you, guys.
And, uh, you have received notice from Ms. Roberts confirming the village board date, and now we need to make a, another motion regarding the minutes. Move to authorize the chairman to refer the report and recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals for case number 2020-Z-08009.
Second.
Our second, that? Our favorite?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, applicants.
Thank you very much.
And now, we can go to the next case. Ms. Roberts, would you please call the next case?
Our next case is 2020-Z13-910 Chippewa Lane. This is a request for a side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story rear addition on the legal non-conforming structure. Um, also, I would add, uh, for all of our cases tonight, I have the, um, documents queued up, so if the applicant would like something to be shown on the screen, just let me know.
As we discussed with Lisa, before each of the case, I, I will ask, since I don't see people in the audience, whether anyone wishes to speak on this case and has not been sworn, please identify themselves now.
I'm Laura, I'm the landlord of the night, can you call in?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I did not hear the address when, uh, the lady from the village staff was speaking.
910 Chippewa Lane.
Thank you, no, I do not wish to speak to this.
And we do have the owner and, uh, the applicant here, present.
Okay, uh, welcome, and please proceed.
I'm Laura Metzafi, I'm the owner. Um, I have lived here for 17 years, and what we're looking to do is replace an existing sunroom, which is over 30 years old, um, with a new room. These, the existing sunroom is in crooked on a foundation, and it's, um, kinda shifting and settling, and over the past winter, I've had a couple panes have actually shattered, so now they're just, just a whole pane. Um, so the existing structure is just deteriorating, so the new room will be four feet shorter than the existing structure, um, so it'll provide more open space, more lawn, and it will just look a lot nicer.
Any questions from the applicant?
My builder is here as well, Adam Metzafi.
Yes, this is Adam Kingen, um, I'm the contractor, I just wanted to chime in with, um, to sort of second what she said, is we're actually, after we tear this down, we're building a room that's four feet shorter and four feet smaller than the existing one there. So we're actually adding more lawn, more green space to the area, um, along with updating the look of this older, um, looking sunroom.
This is Bob Sermon, I think it's a very reasonable request, especially since you're taking an existing, um, building and reducing the size of it, so I can support it, I don't have any issues with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sermon. Anybody, other board members we should speak on this? Seeing or hearing none, does anyone, any participant, I wouldn't say in the audience, wish to, uh, wish to comment on this application? Uh, have we had any notice, uh, Ms. Roberts, from anyone?
I wasn't that notified that anybody wanted to attend, and I don't, I see anybody who I don't associate with another case.
Thank you. So now we will close...
Mr. Everett, did we have any comments on YouTube or...
No comments on YouTube Live.
Thank you.
So with that, I will close the testimony, and, uh, this point, uh, ask for a motion from one of the board members.
I move to recommend granting a request for a four-foot rear yard setback to permit the construction of a one-story rear addition on the legal non-conforming structure at 910 Chippewa Lane in accordance with the plan submitted.
Thank you, any a second?
Second.
Sermon?
Or give it to John, either way.
John. Uh, uh, okay, any discussion?
A, a little bit like the last case, I think that the applicant in this situation, um, is asking for variances that are reasonable, um, and as Bob said earlier, they are actually reducing the size of the existing, um, sun porch, uh, which is an admirable thing, so, um, I, I can support that.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I also can support it. Um, obviously, you know, by reducing the square footage, it's a, it's a, an overall plus, and, um, you know, and driving by and looking at the, you know, between the, uh, the neighbor on the east, um, I mean, it shouldn't be any, anything different for them, so, um, I think it meets the standards of review, and I can support it.
Yeah, this is Chris, I would agree. Um, you know, to meet the code, you'd have to have a very shallow, um, porch, you know, you'd have to reduce it another four feet, so that, it seems like this is a modest request.
This is Bob, I agree...
ago, and of course, that slab moves around, and that's why you have cracking, um, and I think it'll be a net improvement in terms of the aesthetics for the neighbor, um, and so I can support it.
Thank you. I obviously, I agree with all the comments, uh, particularly, uh, Christine said that they can't cut it out of four feet. It wouldn't be a workable, uh, habitable room, so I can, I can support it as well. So can you, uh, please call the, Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Mr. Falcon?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Urban?
Yes.
And Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Roberts, can you call the next case?
Our next case is twenty twenty Z ten, three thirty-sixth Sheridan Road. This is a request for a two thousand four hundred and ninety point three two square foot total floor area variation, a four point two five foot north side yard detached garage setback variation, a three point two five foot north side yard garage eve setback variation, plus a five point two two foot accessory structure separation variation, uh, a two point three four foot detached garage height variation, and a one point seven five, one point seven, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy five point one square foot front yard impervious coverage variation, construction of a new detached two-car garage and new raised deck modification to an existing circular driveway, legal non-conforming structures.
Thank you. Do we have the application, the applicant, uh, available?
Yes, you do. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Oops, hang on one second. Now my camera's on. I'm not sure why I'm not popping up there. I can see you.
I can see you now. Go ahead.
Perfect. Hi, I'm Bill Tripskowski, and my wife and I purchased the house, uh, back almost a year ago, it seems, and, uh, as I, as I go through a few things, you're gonna see that we meet all of the requirements for why, uh, we're requesting this variance, and before I begin, I wish this was as easy as the first two, but unfortunately, it's not going to be. And the presentation I've got for you is gonna take a couple of minutes, but I think it'll outline everything that, uh, you're looking for. So what I'd like to do is share my screen with you all. Uh, oh, what the heck happened? Hang on. My screen share was working before. Hang on. Oh, there it is. Okay, perfect. So what I'm showing you now is the original property that was construct, uh, built in nineteen oh seven. If you follow my cursor, this is the house in question. It's three thirty-six Sheridan Road. This is a coach house that was originally with the home, and everything else was part of a single parcel of almost five acres on Lake Michigan. So the house, as I said, was constructed in nineteen oh seven, and we just went before the, uh, historic committee or commission on Monday. We're granted, uh, a recommendation for the house to be a historic landmark, uh, going forward. So we're trying to do everything that we can that's right for the house and right for the neighborhood. If you, if you folks remember the house, uh, from the past couple of years, it was the one with the blue tarp on the roof for almost two years. So we've undertaken a monstrous renovation of all the interior, and the challenge that we're having is right underneath this tree, where you can see my cursor, there's a garage. Uh, Canterbury Court, going back, uh, back to the twenties, uh, was actually divided off, so the entire five-acre parcel that was originally there was subdivided, and parcel number eleven was actually retained by the owner of the house, and, uh, at a later time, in the fifties, it was subdivided further. So what they did, they split off the coach house and turned that into a separate half home. They, again, in the fifties, uh, split off three twenty-eight Sheridan Road, and they left, uh, an almost nine thousand square foot house on a parcel of land that only has access from Sheridan Road and was originally on five acres. So it's created a number of challenges with meeting the zoning code, simply because it started out on such a large parcel, and as things were subdivided, uh, that parcel shrunk considerably. Three twenty-eight Sheridan Road, I believe, was, uh, granted via variance by the zoning board when it was parceled off back in the fifties. So there are a few challenges with the lot, uh, that we've, that we've encountered since living there. One of them is with surface water drainage. The existing garage, as it stands right now, is in the rear of the house, and it's a, it's a brick paver driveway going all the way along the north side of the house and entering into, uh, the garage. The garage was actually constructed over a steam tunnel that connected it to the coach house, and that steam tunnel still exists, so I can walk from my basement underneath the garage before I hit a concrete wall that was installed at a, at a later date. But when it was installed over the steam tunnel, what they neglected, the steam tunnel was actually, uh, two and a half feet higher than the driveway on the north, and it's almost, uh, uh, four feet higher than the lot on the other side. That's created tremendous drainage problems with all of the water that rushes down the driveway when it rains, such that, so much that the neighbor to the east, the Redmonds, actually spent, uh, a good amount of money to install a, uh, drain tile system, which actually takes rainwater along their property line and out to Canterbury Court. So that's one of the, the challenges that we're facing with this property, is how to deal with the, uh, uh, surface water that accumulates in that part, uh, to go ahead and, and help the neighbors out, uh, as well as, uh, stop the, the area from being swum. So, uh, this is a picture from a recent rainstorm, with the garage a little bit, uh, two and a half feet higher than the surface. Uh, this is actually pavers, uh, brick pavers all the way to the back of the yard, but they're covered in standing water every time it rains, because there's no, there isn't adequate drainage back there. The, uh, driveway height at the front of the property, uh, going from the engineering study, and I'm not a civil engineer, but it's at six hundred and sixteen, I don't know what the heck that means, but I know it's in feet, so if you figure that's six hundred and sixteen, and this was at about six oh seven, over a length of about eighty feet or ninety feet, I've got a grade change of, uh, eight feet. My wife actually drove down the driveway during the wintertime, uh, to go ahead and load some things out of the garage and into her van, and wound up getting stuck. It took almost, uh, fifteen minutes just to get up the driveway, and that was with a sprinkling of snow. Uh, if there's any significant accumulation of snow, the driveway is unusable, and the previous owners did not use the garage during the winter, uh, for that very reason. So it, there are true, there are safety issues right now, as I think this, uh, incline is probably the steepest, one of the steepest inclines in Womack, uh, with the exception of Gilson Park. So what we're proposing here, and you have to excuse my, uh, my images here, I'm not the best at technology. Uh, what we're proposing to do is remove an asphalt driveway that's in the front. Stop saying that. Uh, right now, it, it's a brick paver driveway all the way around the circular driveway. It extends all the way to the back. We're proposing to take out a portion of the driveway that was poured at a later date, that's asphalt, and reuse the pavers that are in this portion of the, uh, of the property to repave that with, uh, brick pavers, so that it's a consistent, uh, image, and there's additional parking on the driveway, uh, but it still stays with the historic character of the house. We'll go ahead and actually, we plan on pulling up all of the pavers on the entire driveway and relaying them, because a number of them are cracked, damaged, or sitting sideways. Uh, we also plan on redoing the paver portion of the driveway for the proposed two-car garage. That is going to create, uh, surface area or ground area in, uh, pervious, rather than impervious, as currently exists. We want to demolish the existing garage, which is in the back of the house. We also want to, uh, put a concrete walkway going from the driveway all the way to the backyard, uh, and then put a, a deck on the rear of the house, as well as a, a fire pit area in the back of the house. The, uh, as you can see on this drawing, the lock line of the property appears as though, uh, a portion of the driveway is actually on, uh, the other property, and that is actually true. Uh, when we did our initial survey, we discovered that a portion of this driveway was on the other property, and with, uh, three thirty-six Sheridan Road as an easement to use this portion of the, uh, property as it sees fit. So we, we've got the right to go ahead and pull up these pavers and relay them, uh, and that, like I said, that we discovered during the title process, uh, for the home. So how do we plan on doing this? So a couple of things are going to need to occur. Number one, uh, we're demolishing the garage in the back of the house. Uh, again, we'll be relaying the driveway entirely and, uh, expanding slightly the existing, uh, pavement, uh, asphalt parking area with relayed concrete pavers. We'll be putting in a trough, moving the garage up significantly from the rear of the yard, so that the grade change is only a couple of feet, as opposed to eight feet, uh, with a slippery slope, which is unsafe in its current configuration. To help the drainage situation, we're going to be putting in a trough drain to take care of all of the, uh, water that comes off of the, uh, driveway or the front yard. It'll go into a pipe, which will take it down to a six-foot-deep, four-foot-wide drywell, which will connect to a second, uh, six-foot-deep, four-foot-wide drywell at the southeast corner of the property. We plan on regrading the entire yard to help deal with the surface water challenges that there are right now, and, uh, we've hired Green Guard, uh, civil engineers to design this plan, as well as Town Studios architects to design the garage. Just a couple of quick images on the detail of the drywell, as well as the, uh, perforated storm tile, which will be connecting the drywell, uh, to the, uh, trough drain at the front of the garage. So here's an image of what the house is going to look like, and our initial design, or the garage will look like. Our initial design had the garage, uh, uh, mimicking the gambol roof that is on the existing house, and when we ran that past the Illinois, uh, Historic Office, which has, uh, approved or preliminarily approved the historic designation of this house, they actually made us change the garage to something that did not look similar to the existing home. So that design has been approved by the, uh, State of Illinois Historic Preservation Office. The dimensions of the garage are approximately twenty-three and a half feet by twenty-six, uh, feet, uh, and of that twenty-six feet, approximately four and a half feet of that is an internal staircase to accommodate the grade change. If we were to go ahead and have a doorway on the side or a doorway on the front of the house, and then have to walk downstairs, again, during the winter, you're faced with safety issues walking down, uh, potentially slippery or icy stairs. It just creates another nuisance when we couldn't close them inside, uh, and improve the safety of the entire garage. The, uh, uh, construction of the garage, we're proposing using, uh, existing brick from the house that we are going to be salvaging when we remove, uh, uh, create new openings in the, in the rear or east elevation of the house for additional windows. That'll be on the front, so architecturally, we'll still have the same details going up the, uh, sides of it. Architecturally, uh, it'll look consistent with the home from the front of the house. On the side of the house, we're proposing a party board, uh, and we are currently evaluating whether to use a similar, uh, asphalt shingle roof, or actually go with the clay tile roof, which I think is a direction we're gonna go, uh, but the clay tile roof that was originally on the house, just to maintain the historic character of the, of the home. The, uh, as far as the deck goes in the back of the house, we're going to, we'd like to remove and plan on removing an eight-foot by nine-foot, uh, porch area that's unconditioned, so there's no heat or air conditioning in it right now, uh, and then taking the existing exterior door, placing that with a, uh, weather, uh, new exterior door that's, that's, uh, good for the weather, okay, and then installing a, uh, the deck dimensions are, uh, going to be approximately seventeen feet by twenty feet. They stretch the entire center portion of the rear of the house, and then come out to approximately equal, uh, even, even the rear of the house. So a couple of quick, quick things, trying to make this, uh, observation. We're trying to go ahead and solve the drainage and surface water issue that, that property has had for years. It's cost, uh, the neighbors to the east, uh, tremendous expense, and right now, it's mosquito problem when it rains because of the cooling part. We're trying to solve a winter driving hazard safety issue, uh, with the slope of the driveway and the position of current garage. Uh, the parking pad, as it stands right now at the base of the driveway, it's too small to actually turn around a van, and so my wife had to back her van down rather than making a, I don't know if they call it a three-point turn, or she wound up having to do about an eight-point turn to go ahead and, and make it work. One of the things we considered was actually moving the garage onto the parking pad, but again, you're faced with an area where you can't, uh, turn around a vehicle, and backing up a vehicle, uh, up that driveway during the winter. I've got a fifteen-year-old who's gonna be sixteen, and that's something that is not, not gonna be a good situation if it were to take place. In addition, move, simply moving the garage to the north of its existing location does nothing to solve the water problem, only exacerbates it by not really removing any hard surface water. Uh, the existing garage that is in place behind the house was built, uh, unpunished, so there are no permits on record with the village. Uh, so we're actually taking down, uh, the structures.
This is the.
None of these conditions, unfortunately, or fortunately may, I guess, was created by, when the house was built, it was on five acres, there was plenty of room to go ahead and, the coach house, and do whatever you wanted to. Uh, when they split off the property to the south on Canterbury Court, that eliminated access that three thirty-six Sheridan Road had to Canterbury Court, which would have made having a garage in the back of the house or in the rear yard setback, uh, perfectly acceptable. Could have found a way to access it from Canterbury Court, but accessing it from Sheridan Road and the existing driveway is just, it's not really a, a useful option at this time. Uh, that is all I have, uh, to talk about. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then, uh, I'll bring it back over to you folks.
Thank you. Um, are there any, any questions for the applicant by the board?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, do you intend to remove?
up a vehicle, uh, up that driveway during the winter. I've got a fifteen-year-old who's gonna be sixteen and that's something that is not, not gonna be a good situation if it were to take place. In addition, move, simply moving the garage to the north of its existing location does nothing to solve the water problem, only exacerbates it by not really removing any hard surface water. Uh, the existing garage that is in place behind the house was built, uh, unpunished, so there are no permits on record with the village. Uh, so we're actually taking down a structure. None of these conditions unfortunately, or fortunately, they, I guess, was created by, when the house was built, it was on five acres, there was plenty of room to go ahead and the coach house and do whatever you wanted to. Uh, when they slid off the property to the south on Canterbury Court, that eliminated access that 336 Sheridan Road had to Canterbury Court, which would've made having a garage in the back of the house or in the rear yard setback, uh, perfectly acceptable. Could've found a way to access it from Canterbury Court, but accessing it from Sheridan Road and the existing driveway is just, it's not really a, a useful option at this time. Uh, that is all I have, uh, to talk about. I'd be happy to answer any questions and then, uh, I'll bring it back over to you folks.
Thank you. Um, are there any, any questions for the applicant by the?
Sure. Uh, I have a question. Uh, do you intend to remove the steam tunnel?
Uh, yes, we do. Right now, the steam tunnel is closed off at, uh, the other property. They constructed a concrete wall. Most of the piping has been removed from the steam tunnel currently and, uh, we plan on enclosing the foundation hole that currently exists. I wanna say it's maybe four feet by, five feet or six feet wide. Uh, we plan, when we pour concrete, on pouring a new foundation there to go ahead and support the structure of the house rather than doing any type of cement blocks. Right now, I think there's just a steel, uh, a steel beam going across.
Mm-hmm. And it strikes me that, that might be, uh, potentially useful as a water storage reservoir, um, but, uh, you know, I'm not designing your, your, your projects. Um, it's just, uh, a, an already enclosed area that would do, do, do well in terms of storing water. Um, the other thing that I was wondering about is the diameter of the pipe that's connecting those two drains.
Yes.
Because the larger the, the diameter of the pipe, the more water you can actually store in the pipe.
Yeah.
And, um, I, I couldn't make that out, uh, when you, uh, showed the image on the screen.
Uh...
Eight inches, maybe?
Uh, hang on one second and I'll pull that up. Uh, just hang on, I gotta get the engine running, drawing. Uh, it might take me a second if there are other questions while I look for it. Why don't, if you can go that route? I don't wanna waste people's time.
I, I would say, i- i- in addition, you know, e- everything that you're asking for seems reasonable. Um, I'd be interested to hear what the neighbors had to say about, uh, your, your water abatement, uh, plan, um, but I'm glad to, to get the details on that, um, because I do think that it will be a net improvement rather than a detriment to your property and to the neighbors.
Thank you. And that reminds me, I did speak with Richard Redman, the neighbor, to the east to put in the drain tile. Uh, he and I have had, uh, a number of conversations. I actually dropped off the engineering plans with him on Monday, uh, for his architect to review. I don't know if he has had a chance to, uh, review those. And then we have spoken with the neighbor to the north. His property, uh, pretty much everywhere is higher than ours, so he hasn't had a problem with the water. It's really Mr. Redman to the east that's been, uh, faced with challenges in the past, so.
I, I have an additional concern related to...
I have a question, uh...
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead, go ahead, Maria.
Uh, um, thank you. Um, it, you haven't addressed the lower patio that you're putting in around the deck and I guess I have concerns about how that will impact drainage on the site. Um, and I am concerned for the Redmans, uh, because everything flows downhill from you to them, uh, and what benefits you may negatively impact them, uh, and tonight's the first time we're seeing any of the details regarding your drainage plans. Um, so I'm just wondering about the interaction of the lower patio, uh, with the drainage plans and is it impervious as well? And how will that runoff be handled?
The, uh, we could take one step back. The, uh, pipe, the corrugated, uh, pipe or rigid pipe was six inches in diameter surrounded by two inches of washstone on either side, uh, and then it was below ground, so I just wanted to get that taken care of. Uh, as far as the, uh, patio that we plan on constructing, uh, we were at this, uh, at this point planning on, uh, doing it in cement, uh, and possibly putting block pavers on top of it. Right now, uh, there is an existing patio and the size of the patio that we're planning on constructing is no larger than the existing garage that's already there. So the amount of green space that we're adding, I believe it's going to be a net neutral to what it is right now, but by improving the grading of the property and having it graded such that the surface water, rather than going towards the Redman's house, uh, is graded towards the drywells that are installed as well as the pipe between them, uh, we believe that's going to be a net improvement.
And where, where will the, that piping eventually drain? Is the drywell a cistern of sorts that will hold the water? And what is the capacity? How quickly will it fill up on a heavy storm? Uh, could you address those issues? And does it drain to the, the stormwater system?
Uh, it doesn't drain to the stormwater system. It drains into the ground and, uh, the plan, I'm, I'm trying, I'm pulling up the drawing right now to see, uh... I have to look. There was talk at one point of taking that and building out onto Canterbury, but I don't believe we went that direction because the size of the drywells was large enough to accommodate that. And right now, if you're thinking about the backyard, there is nothing. It is surface water, so we are going to create a four-foot-by, uh, six-foot-deep, uh, tank, two of them, in the backyard, uh, so, and, and eliminate, uh, impervious surface area. So at the end of the day, uh, I mean, what we're doing is going to be improvement off of what's there currently, the significant...
Correct me if I'm wrong, the, the intent of those, uh, tanks is to, uh, gather the water and then allow it to percolate down into the, to the ground as opposed to holding it and, and transporting it into the stormwater, uh, system or onto the street?
Yes, sir. There's two feet of, uh, uh, stone below the ta- the, uh, tank, so I guess calling it a drywell, it, it, I'm not sure if that's the exact term, I mean, that's what the architect called them. They're not a, a cistern or a storage tank of any type, so the goal is for the water to go into the tanks and, or the drywell and then percolate back into the, the, the ground as it should be.
I have a question. Are, are, it's, is it sized by an engineer based on your lot, uh, configuration and amount of water? I imagine it has been.
Yeah, it has been. And we submitted, uh, the engineering drawings that Green Guard engineers did. They went through and did a full survey of the, uh, property as well as designed the, uh, grading of the property afterwards. Uh, they did the, uh, designed the entire drywell system and, uh, perforated storm, uh, uh, tank, uh, not tank, but tube, uh, pipe system that connects everything, so. And again, those were, those were submitted with the architectural drawings for the property to, uh, the village. I could pull them up on the screen if you wanna see them right now.
Lisa, I wonder, has the village engineer reviewed these plans and do we have any assessment from the engineer, uh, a- about the effectiveness of this system?
Sorry, I'm trying to...
Lisa, I couldn't hear anything you said. All I heard was a train in the background.
Right. Should I repeat the question?
That's me. I'll close my window, sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't know, um, what the status of that review is or what the comments might be.
I guess, um, I have another question. This is Chris, uh, Norick. You talk about improving the site by, um, removing impervious surface and yet when you were speaking of the patio, um, and that being on cement block with pavers over the top, you talked about it sort of being net neutral. So I'm not, I'm not sure if there's, um, you know, an improvement in terms of impervious, impervious surface. I'm not clear on that.
I think Lisa may have done a calculation, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. Let me pull up the site plan one more time just so you could see what's currently covered versus not. And, uh, hang on, am I screen sharing with you folks right now?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Glad I didn't check sports scores. I guess there's no sports score. Uh, hang on, I'm trying to find the right document. Okay, so we're going to be removing everything from back here as well as all of this area. And it's, it's a significant amount of, of square footage of impervious surface. I don't have, I don't have that exact number right now, the amount that we are going to be adding back in, because right now, there's an existing sidewalk that goes all the way down here and this is, uh, an existing concrete block patio right here. The only new addition is really this area right here. So at the end of the day, we're taking out a garage, removing a driveway that extends all the way down. We're adding in from this point over. So I, I, again, I apologize for not having the exact measurements, but I, if I'm eyeballing it, it, to me, it looks like that's about this and this walkway to this point looks as though it's about the same size as the garage and we're removing all of this as well as putting a drywell right there and right there to go ahead and deal with groundwater. What we're doing is a dramatic improvement to the surface water back there.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I think that it is a, perhaps a, a net improvement, um, but when you talk about removing the garage, you're also building a slightly larger garage, so that's actually a, a net minus rather than a net plus. Um, what the, the, the difference is, is in your driveway and the existing apron, um, which I think is actually greater square footage than your proposed patio and, and additional walkway. Just eyeballing it.
Although it also appears that the driveway leading into the proposed garage will be wider than the existing driveway, which is quite narrow.
Yes.
Yeah, it will definitely be a little wider. That, I don't know if there's more apron, 'cause what we plan on doing with the apron is replacing the asphalt driveway that's currently there. Uh, we don't plan to increase the size of that, so I think the net increase that we're talking about for the driveway, uh, really is coming from this area primarily up at the front, in front of the garage.
Isn't right now, though, the current driveway leading down to the garage is brick? Isn't that correct?
It is. It is brick.
And so what's happening is we're losing that brick, we're gaining grass, I suppose, in the back, but you're putting in the front of that to the, uh, west of it will be a garage. So you've lost all of the ability of, uh, water to go into that brick or to pass through that brick and now it's coming directly off of the garage, the back of roof of the garage and going straight into the, uh, the backyard.
But it is a, it is a trench drain. I don't know if you're familiar with that, that runs in front of the garage? So all the water that collects in front of the garage then is sent directly to the drywell.
Goes like this and then follows this to the drywell. So I, I think I understand your concern. What we're doing, we're taking this garage that's here, flipping it up here for all intents and purposes, and where there's a water problem or a drainage problem, we're solving that by putting in a drywell as well as dealing with any water that would come from the front of the property or any of the gutters. It would be going right into this trench system and straight into the drywell rather than flowing down the paver driveway and, uh, pooling at the base of the driveway. I think you could see by the, by the pictures that we have, uh, I mean, that's what it looks like right now with a paver driveway. So if that's supposed to be impervious because it's pavers, it, it's not. I wish it were, but unfortunately, it's not. Oh, and this, right here, this rock, this is the, uh, on the Redman's property, this is the drain tile that they added in. So this water, when it pools, it, unfortunately, it doesn't even reach the drain tile that they put in because of the, uh, uh, because of the grade.
Lisa? Does your property have access to Canterbury Court? Do you have a little sliver?
We do. It's about five feet wide and it's actually a utility easement, so, uh, there's a five-foot-wide path that goes straight to Canterbury Court. Right where my cursor is, uh, is the start of that path. Right in this area.
Be nice if you could collect your water and connect right into the, you know, right into the street there or, you know, similarly to how the neighbor does it. Have it, have it percolating. But that's an engineering issue, I don't, you know.
Well, I was just gonna say, they don't have, what they're doing is, from my understanding, they're collecting the water that's on their property as much as they can and they're putting in the drywells so they won't burden the village.
Sure. So... That's correct.
Lisa, I have a question. Uh, this is Ryan, that engineering drawings, particularly as related to the, to the water runoff and, uh, and the water control, flood control, that those engineering drawings will, will be approved, reviewed and approved by the village engineer and the neighbor to the, the Redmans to the east, hopefully, uh, will, will be, uh, assured that the situation in worst case will not be worse than it is now and hopefully considerably more improved. Is that correct?
And I agree from my professional experience, I think it's an improvement to what, uh, definitely what is there. I don't know if, the grading appears to be just the existing grading, it doesn't have, the new grading still is being calculated?
No, we actually have new grading there, so, uh...
New grading, okay.
I believe it is and, and again, Lisa has...
It's still had the garage on there, so...
Oh, here, hang on one second. This is the one with the new grading.
Oh, okay. Okay, that makes sense.
So this is to the applicant, this is Ryan, I'd like to get a question.
Sure.
You've mentioned the neighbor to the north.
Yes.
Uh, concerning water issues, but does the neighbor to the north have an issue with the, the separation between the, the garage and his, and this property line?
We've mentioned to him that we planned on submitting for this. He had no problem, uh, at least that he expressed to me. He may have, I mean, never know, it, I'm sure Lisa will tell you if he's submitted something to the village, but, uh, he's had no concerns with it. And again, we're pretty far back from his, uh, property line. His house is, is, uh, uh, pretty well inset. Let me see if I can pull up the aerial. I think it should, uh, it's pretty well, uh, pretty far away from our house. Gosh, I don't have a big enough aerial. Oh, wait, yeah, I do. Hang on. I think it's up here. So you can, you can see the distance between his house and our house. If, if this is, I don't know, call it twenty-five feet between my house and the property line, give or take, he's gotta be at least in the fifty or seventy-five. Beyond that, oh, shoot. Burn it.
Right.
I told you, I'm not a technology guy. Well, but anyway, so this is his property, that's his house right there. And, uh, there's monstrous, I mean, big trees that are on this side of the, on his property that, uh, keep the visibility down.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I do have another question about that. So the, the pool, the puddling of the water appears to be in the corner, in the northeast corner.
Yes.
When you try to raise that grade, is it gonna shift any water onto the neighbor?
Uh, we, I need to look at what the grade is changed to. I don't believe we're actually trying to raise that grade up, uh, and that shifting, let's find a picture. It's, hang on.
Because it is correct, the north, the, um, the northeast corner, correct?
Correct.
That's the fence line there.
Yeah, so the drywell is gonna go right to this area. This is actually, if you head by to take a look, slightly higher than what we, uh, than what we have right now, so call it eight inches, twelve inches higher. I'm not sure exactly... I'm not sure exactly how much. But, uh, I think, I think right now, his rainwater is going into my puddle.
Okay, so your intention is not to raise that area-
No.
Way up high to shift the water to his property?
No, not at all. Yeah, our, I, our plan is to go ahead and grade it such that it goes into the, the drywell rather than going towards any of the neighbors.
I do have another question, unless somebody else does. Uh, the question I have, if you can go back to your, uh, floor plan that shows, or the site plan that shows the new garage?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I believe it said that it was 4.75 foot wide walk on the side of your home on the, on the, uh, between the garage and the, um, the garage and the house. I believe it says 4.75. Um, I just wanna make sure you're, are you intending, there's utilities on that wall. Are you intending on maintaining, there's gas and electric?
Uh, we, we are-
And your sidewalk.
Yeah, the gas and electric, I need to actually look whether they are on the upper portion or the lower portion. Uh, I'm sorry, the western portion or the eastern portion, because I mean-
It's on the upper, upper grade. It's before the building sets back.
I, uh, it is before the building sets back. I need to look, because I believe, if you look at the footprint of the house, it jogs in a foot and a half here, approximately.
Yeah, it's, it's just before that. Your electric, I took a picture, electric meter is just before the break. So where your cursor is now, and then your gas is about another, uh, four feet to the west.
Oh, four feet to the west.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure you're gonna maintain those and not come back for another request saying, "Hey, we gotta move the garage further to lot line because we don't have enough space."
I think, well, I, I have to look at how far they stick out, because I'll be honest with you, at this point, I don't recall. Uh, and I think-
They don't stick out that far. I would say approximately at the most a foot.
Okay.
You just have a narrower sidewalk there.
If, if I came back to you for anything, it would be to shrink the garage by a foot, to widen the sidewalk.
Okay.
So, uh, or make this, like, leave a foot of, uh, uh, ground between, it, it would be to widen the sidewalk by a foot rather than, uh-
Shift from the garage, okay.
Yeah, I'd narrow the garage.
Okay, I'm good with that, then.
So this is John Colang. On your, uh, total floor area, you're increasing by about 300 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Where is, um, where is most of that? Or, you know, where, where, where are you adding that, I guess?
200 square feet of it is in the garage. Uh, the current garage is approximately 21 feet by 21 feet. And we have proposed a garage that's approximately 23 and a half feet by 26 feet. The reason why we did 26 feet is because of a four-and-a-half-foot staircase that needs to be inside of the garage rather than on the, uh, exterior, or rather than having a door at the front of the garage or on the side of the garage, uh, uh, going down. So we just selec-, uh, elected to put it in there. So 200 square feet of the difference is in the garage. 180 square feet approximately is in the, uh, deck that we're putting in the back of the house. Rest of the house stays the same.
Now, is that, is that deck have separations where the water can get through?
Yes.
Because, because I don't know, if you have concrete below there already, I don't know if that is an increase or not, Lisa?
But, that, I don't know.
No, she's there.
What, my- Sorry, Lisa, I didn't hear you.
I, I think it's brick up to the ground level now.
It's, it's two-by, like, two-by-two, uh, cement block or cement pavers, I guess, two foot by two foot, give or take, uh, right now. And, uh, what we actually plan on doing is, uh, well, what my wife plans on doing, I'm trying to talk her out of it because it costs money. But, uh, uh, we, uh, she wants to go ahead and put a finished ceiling underneath the deck, which would mean you'd have to have a trough system, which means the water would effectively have to run into gutters, which we would again tie into the drywell system rather than, uh, having it simply spit out onto the, the ground. But that's, that's still up for discussion right now.
Bob, can I just add one other thing? Um, Mr. Sermon, getting back to your comment about, uh, shifting the garage if there's not enough room on the south side. Um, there is an easement on the north side, or the south side of the north lot line.
Oh, I see it.
And, and so if they were to scoot the garage any further north, they would need to get utilities.
Correct, it's a utility easement.
Okay, that, that current setback is part of this, uh, well, the 4.25 north yard setback, right? That's part of this request?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions for the applicant? Hearing, hearing none, is there anyone, uh, Lisa or John Adler, if he's still on, that, that wishes to speak regarding this application?
I don't believe there's anybody attending the meeting right now, that, um, has expressed interest and there's been no subsequent, uh, there's been no other, uh, email.
No comments, any people?
Please do. Please, yeah. There, there have been-
Please, yeah.
Sorry. Who's speaking now?
She's married.
Everybody on mute, except the board members. So, hea- hearing, apparently there's no one else that wishes to speak regarding this application or has sent us additional material, uh, except for what has been attached to our package from, uh, the Redmonds to the east. Uh, hearing, hearing none, uh, thank you very much, I will close the testimony.
I'll make a motion.
And we will make a motion. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
I'll move to recommend creating a request for a 2,490.32 square foot or 13.13% total floor area variation. A 4.25-foot north side yard detached garage setback variation. A three-and-a-quarter-foot north side yard garage eve setback variation. A 5.22-foot accessory structure separation variation. A total floor variation. A 2.34-foot detached garage height variation. And a 175.01 square foot or 2.06% front yard impervious surface coverage variation. Commit the construction of a new detached two-car garage and new raised deck and modification to an existing circular driveway on the legal non-conforming structures at 336 Sheridan Road in accordance with the plan submitted.
I, in the-
Do I have a second?
They don't, I mean, you can talk.
No, I can't talk.
Lisa, did you wanna say something?
I mean, you can, yeah.
Lisa.
Sorry, no, I was just, I was just waving at the applicant.
Oh. Okay.
I should show us.
So we have a se-, who, who was the second, please? I didn't hear.
Ah, Hawaii.
Hi, hi, John, thank you. Okay, now, we have a second and a, and a further discussion. Mr. Pelletin?
Um, well, I, I believe that, uh, the owners are, uh, trying to, um, solve the water problem. Um, and whether there's a, uh, a, uh, net neutral, uh, amount of, um, impervious surface or a slight gain, um, I actually think there's a slight reduction in the end. Um, that, um, the steps that they're taking to mitigate the water will be a net improvement, um, on their property and in terms of the neighbor's concerns. Um, that, and the fact that, um, this has probably gotten more scrutiny than almost any other project that, uh, comes before us uh, because of the historic, uh, nature of the project. Um, I think, um, I can support it, and, um, I think it'll be a, a wonderful thing um, when it all is finished. I, I think I mentioned to Lisa, it's a, an architectural, uh, an iconic architectural fixture in the, in the village.
Thank you, Mr. Colang.
Yeah, you know, obviously, this property has a lot of history, and, um, you know, I think in the past, uh, when we've had some of these, uh, historic homes that have needed, um, a number of variances to kinda get them rehabbed and kinda bring them into, uh, you know, a new life and conforming with the 21st century living, uh, requirements and things like that. I think we, we, we've worked hard to, to make sure that we do that so that we don't lose these, these types of structures. I think, um, obviously, there's a lot of time and money being spent here on dealing with the water issues. I believe, weren't the Andersons last year in front of us and put up that fence and wall? And I thought, I thought we approved that last year, and-
That's right.
They did that to deal with the water situation, and obviously, if they're not, you know, if they're not here objecting about things, it must be working the way that they had planned for it to be working. Um, I think, um, kudos for, you know, putting the time, effort, and money into, you know, rehabbing this and bringing it back. Um, you know, I, I think it'll look great when you're done. I think it meets the standards of review, and that the variances are ones that we have oftentimes, you know, not maybe all at once, but, you know, have granted. And I think that this project deserves, you know, to go forward, and I can support it.
I can, uh, this is Bob Sermon, I concur with everyone else as well.
This is Brad Falcoff. I would concur, I will admit that when we started this discussion, I had my doubts after having seen the property and I've seen what was being done. But I have to commend the owners on putting, uh, a very clear, understandable proposal before us that makes a lot of sense and does alleviate the concerns that I had when I walked into here. And, uh, it is a beautiful building, that it's, uh, we're lucky to have someone that's willing to preserve it in a way that I think is going to possibly improve the conditions rather than worsen those conditions.
Thank you. Maria?
I, I would just, uh, say that, uh, the extra scrutiny that we've given this site uh, is warranted, given the steep grade on the property and, uh, the issues that the neighbor to the east has had to deal with, uh, on their own dime. Um, you would hate to improve a property and yet have a negative impact on an adjoining one. Um, I do believe that, um, uh, the owner has done a great job of, uh, addressing the drainage issues. Um, and I almost would have loved to have seen a little more of that as part of our packet, uh, because it, it felt like a black hole as I reviewed the materials. Um, but I, I can support this.
And I agree with Maria. You know, it is, um, you know, it, it can be potentially impactful to the other adjacent property owners because it is so much higher than, um, you know, everyone to the east. So, um, but apparently, you know, um, I think the Redmonds had sent in a letter, and, um, they, you know, they, they must feel like this will be an improvement as well. They have not, um, come forth and, yes, assume this is a win-win.
Thank you. Uh, I agree, uh, initially, I, I, one of the things I looked at was why is the garage so, so large? Uh, relatively large, and, and I can understand the grade change. And to put in a door, wherever you put it, you have interior stairs, uh, which would constrict the amount of space you have for the vehicles. The other, and I'm satisfied, I, I think I'm satisfied, that, that the, the applicants, engineers and designers, uh, regarding the water issues, runoff issues, with the village engineers will, uh, assure the neighbor that the, the problem will be, uh, it will be less than it is now when all this is done. And I commend also the applicant for spending all this time, effort, and money to, uh, turn us into a wonderful, uh, house that the boroughs can be proud of. I can support it as well. So, uh, Ms. Roberts, can you please call for a vote?
Thank you, I'm in. Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mrs. Norrie?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Six of Indian.
So, this, so, so this will go as a positive recommendation to the village board, which meets July 14th. I'm sure you will be there. And, uh, you will receive a notice from Ms. Roberts confirming the village board date. Uh, so we need to make another motion here.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020Z10.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Call for, I guess we have to call for a vote, right?
Yep. Ms. Joe Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Mr. Colang?
Yes.
Mrs. Norrie?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you. So now we go to our, our next case.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Reinhardt, I think you have to let them know when the meeting is for the vil-, city?
He did. He did. He did, he did.
Okay, so it'll be 14.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, can you call the next, uh, the next case, Ms. Roberts, please?
Our next case is 2020, Z14, 1627 Elmwood Avenue. This is a request, rate 425.3, first, uh, coverage variation, 27.21 square foot, or area variation. 4.08 front yard setback variation.
Lisa, you're kinda coming in, coming in and out.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, um, I have done.
That's better.
Okay, a 1.55-foot side yard setback variation, a 3.4-foot combined side yard setback variation, a 0.55-foot side yard eve setback variation, a 37.6 square foot rear yard total impervious surface coverage variation, a 92.1 square foot rear yard structure impervious surface coverage variation, a 0.9 square foot garage height variation, and a variation of expanded windows and a non-nuclear for the construction of a substantial addition remodel that is classified as nuclear. And the architect are here.
You still want it?
Hello, I'm Danny Dowd. Um, I'm the owner of 1627 Elmwood Place. Um, so I am, can you hear, everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. First, I would first like to thank you guys for hearing my case, um, tonight. Um, so, I am a full-time, so a little background about me. I'm a full-time CPA. Um, my soon-to-be-wife is a nurse practitioner. Um, and we renovate old homes on the side. Um, we buy, buy them. Um, most of them are close to tear downs, and we always find a way to preserve them. Um, we do gut rehabs, um, additions to them, um, to, to acclimate them to modern-day living. Um, and we, we sell them and give them new life to, to new homeowners, um, for many years to come. Um, so these are all passion projects. Um, we, our basis is basically to, to enhance the neighborhoods that they're, that they're on. Um, we buy houses that, um, are, have been neglected and on, on wonderful streets as, as Elmwood is, um, with, uh, um, cobblestone pavers and everything, the neighbors. Um, so our, our petition is for, um, the, the main reason for our petition is, is due to the, the narrow lot. It's, it's, the, the current footprint, um, is encroaching the front yard, um, the side yards. Um, and we're wanting to do an addition up with a dormer- a dormer on one side to, so we can have three bedrooms and two bathrooms upstairs, as well as rearrange the windows on the property so we can center them within the new rooms in the home. And then the last request is for a two-car garage with a rooftop deck. The rooftop deck request, it's, there's nowhere in the village handbooks that a rooftop deck is not allowed. It's just the parapet walls that we are proposing are, I believe it's about one foot higher than the allowed flat garage or flat roof garage. And then also our staircase going up to that garage is, is enlarging the coverage, the rear yard coverage of the property. The main reason for the rooftop deck is that there is no back, there's a very small backyard. If we do not, if we don't utilize that space above the garage, we would have to do some kind of pavers or patio in the very, the small area between the garage and the, and the house, which would possibly cause water issues. So, we were trying to utilize the garage most effectively and efficiently.
Okay.
Are there any questions or concerns?
I have a question to start with. What are you exactly preserving here?
So, we are preserving the home itself rather than tearing it down and most of the houses on Elmwood are getting torn down now and they're, they're placed, they're just building new construction homes. Right now, it's, it's, it's a Tudor, it's a Tudor style home, or I'm sorry, bungalow style home. So, we're preserving the first floor, the basement, and we're just dormering one side of the roof.
So, let's just talk about the exterior walls on the first floor. Are those all, you're just gonna repair the, the stucco? Are you gonna redo all of that?
We're gonna remove the stucco. So, right now it's crumbling. We had, we had taken some of the corners of the property had fallen apart and I'm sure we're gonna have to end up, I think there's a lot of rot behind the stucco, just with all of the years of neglect. So, we're gonna be replacing the stucco with hardy siding, which will greatly improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood and the house itself.
Can you preserve the, these are bearing walls, correct?
Correct.
And, and the interior demising wall, is that a bearing wall as well?
So, so we are gonna be preserving all of the framing, the structural framing in the house. We have to put a beam in the basement because there's an old wood beam that's sagging and has steel columns. So, we're basically gonna be reframing the interior of the house but keeping all the bearing ones.
Including the floors?
Uh, the floors, the hardwood floor is, is gone. It's, it needs to be removed and replaced. It's gotten sanded way too many times to where the tongue and grooves are showing.
So, you're basically preserving the envelope without the roof?
Correct, yes, yes. And if you see this house, there's not much to preserve. It's got a, it has a, it's a hip roof on the front, which is not very attractive. It doesn't fit in with the neighborhood very well. So, we're, we're proposing, I think, a much more beautiful structure without tearing this house down and, and pouring a new, you know, foundation and-
Last question, I guess, I have for, for many of the situations where they're basically demolishing most of the house and using the existing footprint to, to, to add to it. Wouldn't it be cheaper to take it down completely and start over?
I think it's che, it's always cheaper. Our, our last project that we sold in the beginning of 19, it was an 1885 farmhouse, and every developer that would look at it wanted to tear it down. But there's something about, I think that just all of, everything that's gone on in the house, the history of the house, they kinda, I don't know, it's kinda weird, but they, they speak to us. When you walk into a house, you know right away whether you want it or not. And whether, the fact that we're giving it new life and tearing it down, I think it's, it's pretty meaningful. And it's a little more work, but I, it's, you know, we're, we like doing that. That's what we enjoy.
I have a question for Lisa. Lisa, is this, since it's been demolished so much, is this considered new construction? I know some of the ones are. It is?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And I guess my follow-up question is, where is the additional square foot that you're requesting? Where is that within the, the home? Are you increasing the footprint of the first floor?
It's gonna be the garage, which will be the, the coverage.
Okay.
You already gave a-
No, I'm sorry, in the dormer on the second floor, which will increase the square footage of the home.
Okay, but the, the footprint of the house isn't changing?
Correct.
Um, I guess the way we have to look at it is, you know, this is the way the city requests that we view these projects, is that they're considered new construction because of the extent of the gutting of the house. And given that, then we need to look at the, the codes and apply them to the house. So, if it was a new house and you were applying for it, I don't think we could support a roof deck because that's additional square footage. And I think, I mean, it's tough. I understand the constraints of the site, but at the same time, there are codes that will restrict you from, unfortunately, if you weren't even gonna put the roof deck, the extent of the paving that you could do within your backyard is also restricted, and that's to allow for proper drainage. So, I guess that's all I have for now. I'd like other people to comment.
This is Jilda Boyd. Can you hear me?
Well-
Jilda Becker? Oh, not yet?
Not yet. We, we will get to you and finish. But to follow up with, sir, Mr. Sermon, I think what is more important is, is this empty lot, they couldn't come close to building what they're, they're building, what they have now. And so, I, I think it's always, the issue is always when they deal with these things, is, is they leave enough in place, in this case, just the envelope, no floors, and, and the basement, just an empty shell, no roof, and are hoping that we will give them consent to the variations because the existing envelope, the existing footprint, even without the garage, would not comply. So, I always have that concern with respect to the, to the roof deck. I don't think the roof deck adds the incremental build footage. It's, it's the whole garage, which is 22 by 20, right?
Correct.
And now, regarding the roof deck, the variation of 12 feet 9 inches is to the top of the rail, right?
Correct, the parapet wall, yes.
The railing, to keep it from falling off, right?
Correct.
What is the height of the required railing? 36 or 42?
36 to 42, right?
Well, it's either one or the other.
Uh, I spoke with our plan reviewer today and he said 36 inches, so 3 feet, yeah.
Okay. Is the, is the roof deck calculated as floor area, Lisa?
It is not. The garage counts as the area.
I see.
I believe just the staircase going to it is counted as square footage or coverage.
I'm sorry, it's part of the, part of the stairs.
And we are, and we are keeping like the floor, the actual structure of the floors, we're keeping, we're not just ripping apart the entire structure. We're just, just the hardwood floor is not able to be preserved. So, we're not just gonna empty out the entire structure and just keep the exterior walls.
Okay, thank you.
And if I recall correctly, the existing garage is really a one-car garage or one and a half. It does not accommodate two vehicles.
Correct, yes.
And the new garage will accommodate two cars.
Yes. And we've also made the interior height space of the garage as low as possible to make it functional. We were, I had scaled it down with my architect, Dave, who's on the, on the meeting today. We actually, I think, brought it down from a nine-foot ceiling or 10-foot ceiling to an eight-foot interior ceiling. So, that way we wouldn't be having to ask for two or three feet for the garage space and, and we can also help preserve the aesthetics of the, of the neighborhood and not have the monstrosity of a garage in the back.
And if I, if I may interject?
Not yet, please.
This is my architect.
Oh, it is, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I'm David Cornus, the architect, and the, the parapet is three foot six. So, it's 42-inch effective railing around that garage deck, which is code.
So, we, and we can scale that down, is that correct, to a 36-inch?
Yes, yeah, I showed the plan reviewer your, and he said 36 inches was the minimum.
So, then maybe we're only asking for six inches then?
What, what do you, he mentions of the current garage? It's a one, it's just a small one-car garage?
It's 22 by 14, according to the plan.
Thank you. There it is.
So, this, what happens to the water now that the, I mean, that is a very small backyard? When you look at that backyard, it is tiny and you recognize it as being tiny. That's why you've got the need for the rooftop space on top of the garage. Where does the water go at that point when you've now doubled the size of the garage, which basically now will take up the entire backyard and seal off the backyard from the outside?
So, it would be directed around, around the side yard of the garage and it would also be collected by the garage and sent to the alleyway.
Through what means?
The side, the side yards. We could do, uh, we could do some type of drainage tile or collecting system or, that's, yeah, that's something we can totally propose if that's an issue. If that becomes an issue with the engineer, that's something we, you know, we're willing to, to accommodate. So, we're not causing any issues. Our neighboring, our neighbors, I believe there's four or five lots right next to ours that are the same width. And they both, they all have two-car garages on them. So, it's not something that we're asking that's basically not, not currently there. It's just something we don't have on our lot.
Actually, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say that, you know, the village at Womack, their goal is to have almost every home with a two-car garage so they can keep the cars off the street. And now with the parking ban, if it snows, you can't park on any village streets. So, I think there is a need for a two-car garage. My concern still would be that you'd have a roof deck and then, you know, we've seen projects like this in the past that have been done where there's no patio shown on the original plan and all of a sudden the patio fills up and the whole backyard is paved then. So, that's my concern when it comes to drainage.
Sure.
So, are you putting a patio in in the back?
We are not putting a patio. So, that's the whole reason for the rooftop deck is so we're, we're just gonna, we're gonna grass as much as we can, remove as much sidewalk as required or needed. We had, we were trying to keep everything on the west side of the, all the sidewalks on the west side of the property. So, that way we're basically eliminating the amount of concrete we have wrapping around the garage to get to the access through the service door or the staircase of the garage. So, we're trying to eliminate the impervious footprint.
And just one other issue and then I'll let the other board members speak. I guess I am concerned about the roof deck. There aren't many in Womack and with the lots being so small, you have to make sure whatever you're developing on your property isn't injurious to your neighbors.
Sure.
You know, their privacy. So, we'll probably hear from the neighbors, but that would be a concern I have.
Sure.
Now, I'll be quiet for a while.
We, we had designed, we had designed the garage so the south, west and east sides, which face the neighboring properties, have parapet walls or solid knee walls for railings to help with, you know, with privacy and noise. And we have the northern side of it as an exposed railing so you can have view from the house or from the garage to the house. So, that was designed accordingly to help with the noise of neighbors.
How high will it be, the parapet walls of the flat roof?
We're, it, it all depends on what we're granted. We're, we were gonna try to make them as low as possible to just, we, if we're, if we're allowed to, then we can. If privacy is an issue in noise, then we could make them a little taller. This is something we're, that's very flexible.
I think to be code compliant, it's gotta be, let your architects speak, but they have to be at least 36.
Yes.
And possibly 42. I'm now just familiar, I'm a commercial architect primarily. So, I'll let your architect answer that.
Yes, well, I, you know, my, my commercial code reading says 42, but it is possible that it's 36 and I can look into that if that helps.
We're just trying to be at least invasive to the property and to the neighbors.
So, in any case, it would be-
We're, we're trying to be as least invasive to the neighborhood with anything we're proposing. That's why we didn't, we didn't, we could have dormered both sides of the, of the attic and, and blown out the roof. We chose to, since it is such a small footprint or the lot is so small or narrow, we only dormer the one side because that's, that's the only side that it's absolutely necessary to build what we wanted to build.
Any other questions for the applicant or the architect? Hearing man, I want to thank you. We'll have you back if somebody-
Oh, I wanted to speak. I'm a neighbor.
Well, wait, yes, yes.
Oh, I'm still confused. All right, sorry.
Yes, yeah. So, so we'll ask you back, Mr. Dowd, as soon as other people have spoken.
Thank you.
Who do we have, Lisa, that would like to speak on this case?
Um, yeah, we have-
I'd like, I'd like to speak as well?
Yeah, we've got several folk. I don't know if you just wanted, want me to go down the list or-
I will ask the, yes, please, go down the list. So, we have a couple here too. I don't know how you figure out who wants to speak from, from the community, but whatever procedure you have, we're, we're here too. Yeah, I think Lisa has a list and she will go down that list. You identify yourself and give your address as soon as you ask to speak. Go ahead, Lisa.
Yeah, Richard, maybe since you, you're presenting a vote, there may be, he's like-
So, Richard, you're up.
Okay. Chairman Schneider, I, and perhaps I was being inattentive, but did you swear anybody in?
Oh, did all of, thank you for reminding me. Did I, did you, were you here at the beginning? Did I swear you in?
Yes.
I swore in.
Yes.
Okay. And anybody else that will speak, make, make sure that they're swore, they have been sworn in.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, just quickly, thank you all for your time. I know this is, you're wildly overcompensated for what you do here for the village's benefit. And, and this is, I think, really one of the best manifestations of how local government works well. So, again, thank you for your time and that you put into these things. So, I live at 1619 Elmwood. We're on the same side of Elmwood as this property and we're a couple of doors down. And I have some serious concerns about the proposal. I completely sympathize with the owner developer's desire to, you know, try and preserve an existing property and sell it rather than tear it down. But when you add up all the elements of what he's trying to do here, which is use an existing footprint and then all of the existing setback variations from it, and then increase those setback variations vertically, and then he, he doesn't have enough space to, you know, accommodate what he thinks is a sufficient backyard area with a, with a patio. So, he's gonna put his recreational area on a- area on a garage rooftop deck, which is unprecedented in Wilmatt, except I think maybe there's one example. It's not consistent with the character of the community. It's something that would be very intrusive on the neighbors to have people on that deck looking down over them, looking into people's bedrooms, looking over their backyards. This is a serious problem. And I really hope that this owner developer can find a way to scale back this project to something that still preserves the existing, I'm sorry, I'm getting, getting back here, I can't, I need to turn my speaker down. That can preserve existing property without having development he's trying to do in terms of the level. I'd love to see us able to put a permeable patio in the backyard, have a more traditional garage, if that's possible for their, you know, backyard, you have a particular, you know, enjoyment aspects. But again, that rooftop deck is a serious, serious problem. The, some of the, some of the board members and the developer have pointed out that there's not much to preserve here. So what he's trying to do, and that's why it qualifies as new construction, is to take the existing footprint and benefit from the setback variations, which are very substantial, and use that footprint to build a bigger house that would never be permitted for new construction. And that's to me a little bit sort of circumventing or shoehorning into the permission for redevelopment to do something that's too big and too intrusive for this property. The, it may be correct that the rooftop deck doesn't add additional squared footage except for the stairway, but the problem is that the rooftop deck itself is a situation where even if he's got a parapet around the entire perimeter on three sides, the east, the west and the south, he now has a situation in which he's got a railing on the north that looks into his backyard, but it also looks into the adjacent backyards and it looks into the neighbor's bedroom on the second story. This is, this is a Chicago-style garage rooftop deck that I think doesn't belong in Wilmatt. Now, I understand that the ordinance doesn't strictly prohibit this type of garage rooftop deck, but my understanding that there's only been one ever permitted in Wilmatt in recent years, and even that one was quite contentious with opposition from many neighbors and it finally was accepted. And it wasn't an alley disconnected garage, it was an adjacent garage attached to the house, which is a different type of circumstance. I'm concerned about the water flow issues. I'm concerned about the fact that if they don't have a patio, somebody in the future may have a patio and they'll have more impermeable surface here. I think that the comment by the owner developer, and I encourage what this, what Mr. Dowd is trying to do generally, but this plan doesn't meet the criteria, I think, to get a thumbs up. He says he's trying to be the least intrusive to the neighbors. And I think that this rooftop deck especially is a giant sore thumb that actually does exactly the opposite. It's the most intrusive, with people up on that deck looking down on the neighbors and into the, into the houses next door. I hope that there's some way he can revise these plans and preserve this property in a way that's acceptable, but this does not, I don't think this satisfies those conditions.
Thank you very much for your comments. Lisa, who is next?
I just wanted to say one other thing that one of my neighbors kept on getting cut off from the call. So as a fallback, he is here, Mr. Bob Berger, and when he's called, he's going to be through my feed.
Bob Berger?
Yes.
You need to just go ahead now?
Yeah, I don't know that I see Mr. Berger separately, so...
I know he said he...
I was in, I was in the call earlier, I've dropped from the call twice. The first time I got back in, second time I quit and so I've come across the street to be able to speak to you tonight.
Mr. Berger has shoes on now. Come, come.
Shoes and pants, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Berger.
I consider pants the sine qua non before I testify.
Can you give us your address?
Yes, sixteen eighteen Elmwood. I'm directly across the street from Mr. Huzig's home and I have lived in Wilmatt for thirty-three years and I would like to also thank you for your service tonight. I'm very glad there are people that have the patience and the diligence to do this because I know I'm not one of them. But I would also like to object strongly to the idea of the rooftop deck. It changes the character of the neighborhood. I have nephews that live in the city that have those and that certainly isn't what I want to see for Wilmatt. I think it would change the character of the neighborhood and would encourage more if you come before you and once you start setting the precedent of this one's okay, that one's okay, then what are you gonna say to the next five or ten or fifteen requests for rooftop deck as well? And then it starts to resemble something more like Wicker Park or Bucktown instead of Wilmatt that we all know and love. I'm, my, Rich mentioned, Rich Huzig mentioned other things about the property I would also echo support for with my main concerns about the rooftop deck and I happen to know the firsters who are also one of the next door neighbors. And the idea that their home would be subject to that kind of ability to look down from a neighbor would seem to me to be a large disincentive to that, to them as neighbors. So I would encourage you to not go forward with this until these concerns are addressed and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Berger. Who is next, Lisa?
Just going alphabetically, David Herster is next.
Go ahead.
Thank you for hearing us. You know, I would echo what the architect has said.
Can you give us your address, please?
Oh, yes. We're at sixteen twenty-one Elmwood, which is two houses away from the property under review. That, I was gonna say that we echo what Rich Huzig has said so far and our particular concern is the rooftop deck, which looks from a distance of thirty feet, which has a commanding view of our bedrooms thirty feet away and from our yard. And I think it would make a very significant change to the neighborhood.
Your audio is breaking up.
Is that better? Can you hear?
I'm sorry.
I think it would make a significant change to the character of the neighborhood as was said, or something more like down, as opposed to in Wilmatt. And we would be very disturbed by it more and also the loss of height if it is changed. I think that's a pretty much all we can say.
Thank you very much. Next, Lisa?
Ms. Becker?
Ms. Becker, you're on.
Now you can hear me, I think. And I don't know if I can get my camera to work, but I live right next door. I own the house at sixteen thirty-one, which is next door. And the first thing I'd like to say, Mr. Dad, I'm so thrilled that somebody is rehabbing because that house has been looking like that for years. And it's just been an eyesore for the neighborhood, so it's good that somebody's gonna take care of it.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And I have a concern too about the deck because the yards are so small, especially their yard, the house is being rehabbed, but you can look right into the yard next door at sixteen thirty-one. And of course, looking into the windows too is going to be quite easy. And we have a teenage girl in the, in the house, so that does not make me happy. But I feel that we really need to keep, these lots are so small that you start to feel like you're boxed in. When I, when I think about this garage with the deck above it and then a wall around it, it's really going to close in the area. And what's beautiful about the area are the trees that we can look at from the backyard and you put up that tall structure and we're not gonna have the scenery that we bought in Wilmatt for. And I've been living here sixty years, so this is really my home. I also want to mention that the, on the main house, there is a stairway going into the kitchen that I understand is going to be covered over, which means the house is really gonna be larger in that sense than, you would notice from the outside. Or if I'm looking at the plans, I didn't realize that would be closed in, it was more closing in of the property than needed. So that's a concern. Also, the front porch, I think half of the front porch is going to become glassing. So it's not really keeping the same footprint as the house that's there right now. So I'd like that looked at a little bit. I'm not sure if I would any, oh, I do want to say that I concur totally, wholeheartedly with Richard and with David and please seriously consider looking at how this is going to be done. We only have three feet between our lot yard and the house next door to us. So, you know, hopefully nothing is gonna come into that three feet because it's small enough as it is. But thank you for listening and thank you for your help, all of you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Lisa?
The next person on our list is Laura Rodriguez.
Does he have a picture?
I, I'm actually married to Bob Berger, so I'll just go with his comments.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, next on our list is Shabon.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, great. I was, just, I think that the rules and regulation of the village basically allows that is a bad deck, I'm okay with that, but that is a village, the board can decide what to do and then the rules and regulations is pretty much with the village actually, as the village does, we are okay with that. I'm okay with that.
I didn't understand that. You're okay with what, sir?
According to the rules and regulation of the village.
I, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm at sixteen twenty-five.
You're at seven, where, what is your address?
Sixteen twenty-five.
Sixteen twenty-five. Okay, next door. Thank you. Anyone else?
And then we have a phone number, eight four seven four two one. I'm not sure who that is.
Are you on the...
Five two oh nine, hello?
Five two nine, yep, that's you.
Can you give us your name and address?
Yes, my name is Bruce Seitzler, S E I T Z E R, sixteen oh seven Elmwood, same block. And my comment is something that I would take issue with Mr. Dowd's suggestion that adding a rooftop deck to the garage is matching the character of the neighborhood or enhances the neighborhood. In fact, I think it's really disingenuous. As far as I know, there are no such rooftop decks in our neighborhood and I think to add those sort of things would be a detriment to the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood and I would strongly suggest we not approve that.
Thank you. Anybody else, Lisa?
I just have one other comment. You received an email from Mr. Stempel at seventeen oh one Elmwood. I guess he couldn't attend tonight. He had just asked, he requested that the petitioner be required to utilize a permeable paving surface, system for all surface paving to mitigate the impervious coverage request.
Thank you.
We do have a comment on YouTube Live from Will Healan, sixteen oh six Elmwood. I want to object to the deck and the roof of the garage proposed at sixteen twenty-seven Elmwood Avenue is out of character with the nature of the neighborhood and would infringe on the privacy of adjacent neighbors.
Is that the only one, Mr. Healan?
That is the only comment submitted through YouTube.
All right, I think we've had all the participants that have, we've heard from all of them. I now have to go back to Mr. Dowd, you have the last word. You can respond to all of what you've heard.
So I have, I have just a few points of clarification. I know this is, all of the, all of the variances are ruled at once and they're not selected which ones are approved or not approved. We don't want to lose this chance, this opportunity to start working on the property that we closed on back in February by getting denied and having to reapply. So if this was something, if the rooftop, so if, if we were to eliminate the rooftop deck and just make a normal gable roof, the one point is the gable roofs are actually taller than the garage we are proposing. The regulations are just different for flat roof garages. So we're actually blocking less than you would normally block with a gable or, you know, hip roof because of the height. We, we're not here to make neighbors mad, but also with, with the amount of money and time we're gonna be spending on this project, on the amount of work we're doing on the actual home itself, this is gonna be a huge selling point to the property. If we were to put a patio system or permeable patio system between the house and the garage itself, there's no area for pets to go to the bathroom, there would be a very limited grass area to use for kids or animals. But I would, basically, and there's also ways of changing this garage to where we're able to put the rooftop deck and lowering the, basically lowering the height of the garage and moving the staircase to the inside of the garage to still accommodate this rooftop deck. So it's really, the point I'm making is there's ways around it to still get the rooftop deck and it should be more of just the height variance and the coverage ratio that we're talking about rather than whether there's a rooftop deck or no rooftop deck.
Any other comments?
Also, if, is it possible to rule it to where you don't give us the height variance if you were to say no on the rooftop deck proposal and allow us to just put a conform, a two-car garage with all of the variances we're requesting for the current structure?
Well, this is Bob's sermon. I guess what I would propose, we've had these issues in the past where there's, you know, you have indecision on which route you want to go and you, I understand if we ruled against it, then you would have to wait, I think, a year. So in the past, what they, we've done, and Lisa would be the one to confirm this, but we ask that you continue the case to the next meeting that meets your timeframe so you can rethink what you've heard tonight, you can work with the city, work with Lisa and then develop another modified plan and come back in two weeks or whenever it's available. Is that, would that work, Lisa?
That's certainly an option if the applicant wants to look at that kind of change to the garage. If the applicant is open to just, I don't know that you necessarily need to have the applicant come back if it's just a matter of changing the roof line and eliminating the stairs. If he wishes to withdraw that part of his request, then, then I think we could just, if the board was comfortable, you could just move forward with that tonight and then he could present that revised drawing of the garage to the village. Kind of a question of whether the zoning board wants to continue to entertain the rooftop deck or whether you want the applicant, strongly suggest the applicant to reconsider that.
Yeah, this is John. In looking at this, you know, obviously the rooftop, top deck, a lot of comments from the neighbors, there is an issue of changing the character, so I think that's something that needs to be addressed. Going to the larger garage only adds about a hundred and thirty square feet. There's still another three hundred and twenty additional square feet you're looking for. I think that needs to be reduced, at least from my perspective, maybe not from everybody's, but I'm just trying to give you my perspective. Eliminating the rooftop deck doesn't do it for me to say that I, you know, I can approve this. I think there's more things you need to look at and if you want to do that, maybe, you know, if you don't want to do it, you still might pass tonight, you might not. But if you want to tighten this up and get rid of the rooftop deck, certainly the two-car garage... the two-car garage is something I think, uh, you know, we all think is a positive so that, you know, there's no issue with that and the size that you have. Um, but this is a small lot. You know, you, you know, you bought it, you're taking on the project and, you know, how the standard is, you know, since you're doing, you know, eliminating so much of the house and has to be treated as new construction. And, and we've been pretty, pretty hard on, on these types of situations and saying, you know, the village board should decide it because you're really not complying. You know, if there's a couple of minor variances, I think that's something we can look at. But otherwise, from my perspective, I, I don't, you know, I, I wouldn't be in favor.
So if I were to, um, if we were to remove the rooftop deck from the variance and just put a standard gable roof on the garage, um, keep the, the current structure, the twenty by twenty-two size, um, and then eliminate as much sidewalk as we can. I believe there's sidewalk around the house that we can eliminate, um, to help to allow for more permeable space or, um... Because we, the problem is we're holding a, a large mortgage on the property and we've been paying it since February. Um, and, and with COVID and all this stuff, it, it's all hit us, it all affected us. So it's, it's been kind of a detriment to this, this house and we almost wish we didn't buy it even though we love it so much. Um, just really bad timing and, uh, I don't think we can really give up another month or two months to go through another variance process or another, um, zoning board meeting. Um, so I would like to just submit it without the rooftop deck and everything else that we're requesting.
Okay, Lisa, that we have to do with...
I guess. I, I have one more question before we go ahead with modifying the request. Um, I'm concerned and I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Coling. Um, is the second floor, John, from your interpretation, a lot larger? I know I'm the architect, but I don't, uh... I, I guess it's larger because of the roof and the square footage. So would this, this six square footage exceed new construction? It does?
I think it does.
Okay. I, I also have an issue with that. Um, David, do you know if it does or not?
I know it's very close. I don't know right offhand. Lisa, do you have those calculations?
I, I'm looking at the, um, the floor area worksheet. And if, if the numbers are to be believed, the second floor, uh, as proposed adds two hundred seventy square feet, uh, to the house. And the first floor, uh, adds five hundred twenty-five. If I'm just doing the math.
If you look at page three, uh, of the, of the application, you see the lot coverage, the maximum is seventeen seventy-seven and proposed in two thousand and twenty-nine. So that's a difference of some...
And that's with the gar... That's with the garage.
Right.
And the floor area, it's only sixty, sixty square feet as well?
The garage only has a hundred and thirty square feet.
But the total floor area, which addresses the second floor issue and...
Yes.
Is the maximum permitted is twenty-six thou... twenty-six hundred sixteen and the proposed is twenty-six hundred seventy-three. So, uh, Mr. Coling, that, the total built area, whatever the, the space is, is in excess of something like less than sixty...
Fifty-seven.
That's sixty square feet. So that's...
It, it's a de minimis increase.
The first floor is, is, uh, staying the same in, in terms of, uh, FAR.
Well, it is, it, it is exceeding the, uh, the maximum existing. It's just, this is what I don't... Lot coverage, it has to do with the garage.
Okay, this is, this is, this is, yeah, this is how I'm looking at it. They're currently conforming. They want a four hundred and fifty-two square foot variation. The garage adds a hundred and thirty. That means there's three hundred and twenty additional. That's how I'm reading it. So to me, this looks like it's...
I don't think they... If I could say, John, I'm not agreeing with you. It, it, three of the variations that are requested are existing to the house, if I saw the plans correctly. And that's, there's a four-foot front yard setback variation that is currently in place. Yeah, the house is non-conforming. The, the one point five-five side yard setback is also existing.
Maria, if you go to page three...
Yes.
It says existing one five oh four. Right?
Well, that's a lot of coverage. That's including the garage. So that's not the structure itself, the home, which is the total floor area.
Yeah, but that's one of the, it's one of the variations. So these are two different variations. All I'm saying is, you know, we should, you know, we shouldn't try to shoot this, shoot one this thing in. I think the applicant either needs to make a decision to eliminate the roof deck or not, you know, go forward as is, eliminate the roof deck, go forward or defer it. And I mean, it looks like we're trying to shape this right now. I think, you know, I mean, we should vote and, you know, the board will do whatever they do, which is, you know...
Okay, let's, let's, uh, thank you, Mr. Dowd. Uh, I have a question for Lisa. What is the procedure if the applicant has agreed to eliminate the roof deck and put a more traditional roof on this garage? And that's the change he's willing to make? That's the only change he's willing to make to the variations? What, what do we do right now before we have a vote?
I, I would say if the applicant agrees to, um, modify his request to put on a pitched roof and to eliminate the stairs so that the height variation goes away and the, um, the coverage variations are reduced by, you know, the amount of the staircase, uh, that, uh, you can vote on that revised request tonight. And then I would ask the applicant to submit, um, revision revised plan that took a vote in the village board so they see what the actual plan looks like.
Mr. Dawood had also, uh, suggested that he would be willing to remove some of the sidewalk on the side of the house. Um, I think that would improve the prospects of it as well, since it would reduce the need for impervious surface variation.
How, how do you get back to the, how, how do you get...
You would end up just walking. I, we could either do gravel or grass and you could just walk through the gravel or the grass or space pavers.
Yeah, that would be good. Uh, some kind of permeable surface, but I, I don't know that. Okay, so...
I'm, I'm sorry. The, the walk is only adding twelve square feet to the rear yard coverage. Uh, so much of the is in, is in the buildable area and does not count as, as impervious coverage for zoning limits. Um, so it's not necessarily going to change a lot of numbers in that sense. If you want to make him do that for other reasons, that's a different thing.
Okay, so, Mr. Dawood, thank you very much for responding. We will now have...
Okay. And I, and I was talking about for the rooftop. That's where, I think there was some confusion that I was, um, trying to get more clarification from you before I submitted my request. So I am taking away the, the rooftop deck on the, on the garage and, and move forward.
Okay, I just said... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, I, I, okay. I just had one other comment because I agree with, uh, with Mr. Coling. Because if you look at page three, right in the middle, under requirement, lot coverage, it says existing fifteen oh four, proposed two thousand twenty-seven. So it's over five hundred square feet of new lot coverage. Um, I guess that's a larger garage than most, if it's a tall garage.
Well, it's, you, you have to look at, Mr. Sermon, you have to look at the, uh, the maximum allowed is seven ti... seven hundred and seventy-seven, right?
Seventeen seventy-six.
Seventeen seventy-seven, right, or seventy-six.
Well, I, I, and I would, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Cordis to jump in here, but I believe what I understand is that, yes, the garage is larger and that, uh, attribute, uh, accounts for most of it, but that you're inclu... enclosing a, uh, an existing rear porch that gives access to the kitchen? And that accounts for the rest of it?
Uh, in, I, my recollection is that, uh, anything that's roofed over on the first floor is counted as FAR. So no, that, that does not include any, uh, additional coverage or FAR.
Then could you help us understand...
You're, you're sending gable on the second floor forward though, right?
Yes, we are. But that does not add anything to the FAR because it's under the seven-foot area.
And we're talking about the lot coverage, Maria.
Okay.
Trying to figure out why there's an increase of, uh, a little over five hundred square feet in lot coverage, um, when there already is a garage and while they're doubling the size of the garage, that's, call it, two hundred and fifty square feet additional. So there's, you know, for...
It's a hundred, it's a, it's a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, John.
They're adding, they're adding six square feet. It's going from fourteen by twenty-two to twenty-one.
And if, if you look on the center of page three, under requirement, there was lot coverage, the one right below, it says total floor area, existing eighteen eighty-three, proposed twenty-six seventy-three. So I think that's where I have an issue too. And... Well, that's, that's that second floor because the, the existing second floor is, I mean, I don't even know if it's a crawl space, looking at it from the outside, um...
Yeah, currently it's not usable.
But if it's increasing the square footage here, it must be over the six foot eight.
Because they're putting three bedrooms up there, you know?
And, and two bathrooms. So they, really, the request they're making, I believe in, uh, Mr. Coling, is over, over, uh, five hundred square feet? Or six, no, uh, eighteen, nineteen? Yeah, over seven, about seven hundred square feet according to the, the information that was submitted.
It, it exceeds the, the maximum by only sixty, less than sixty...
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
But they, it is adding a lot of bulk to the house.
Yes.
It, it is adding bulk.
That, that bulk is set back, however, from the, from the front facade.
And we're, we're hiding it with that gable, so you're not going to see it as, as a bulky dormer. The gable's going to hide it. The new front.
Are we, are we ready? Uh, thank you, Mr. Dawood.
Thank you.
Are we ready to make a, a motion that revises the applicant's variance request?
I would like to understand what the removal of the rooftop deck affects in terms of the variance. My interpretation is that the only variance you eliminate is the point nine-two for the garage height and...
And the stairs.
Maybe twenty or thirty square feet for the stairs.
That's right, that's it.
It's about, I think it's about sixty square feet for the stairs.
Lisa, how do we go about doing, making a motion?
Hang on a second. The, the removal of the stairs will also reduce the rear yard coverage variation too.
It's about sixty-five feet or so, seventy feet, seventy square feet.
So I, I think that Lisa's got the calculator out and she's working on it. I guess my concern is even if it is only fifty-seven square feet larger, there are other variances, so I, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't have approached the board with something with any increase, um, if that was the case.
We are just trying to propose a, something that's actually usable and not, not where you're just pinning your cars in and you end up just using it as storage.
Sure, I understand that. I'm looking at it now.
Yeah.
So we're talking about two, two changes in the variation, right? One is the, the rear yard, uh, impervious surface coverage variation, which will be reduced due to the stair. And then the, the height variation of the roof.
And to clarify, um, are you changing from a flat roof to a pitched roof? Is that what you agreed to?
Yes.
Okay, so that, um, reduces the lot coverage variation. We have ninety-eight point square feet.
How many?
Three ninety-eight point three. That eliminates the, the total rear yard coverage variation at all. And that eliminates the, um...
Lisa, what did, what did you say? Did the lot coverage variation reduce the size?
By fifty-four square feet, so three ninety-eight point three.
Oh, okay, all right.
And you said that eliminated the, the variation request?
The rear yard total coverage variation.
Okay.
Lisa, did that also eliminate the walkway that we have been talking about on the side of the house?
No, the, the walkway on the side of the house is, does not need relief.
Okay.
And then, of course, the, um, eliminating, assuming it's a conforming pitched roof, eliminating the flat roof height variation, the point nine-two feet.
So we have basically two, two, two changes to the variations, right? We're eliminating the flat roof. And then we have, we have a reduction in the rear yard impervious surface coverage variation.
The total is eliminated, the total variation.
Okay, so we don't have a variation there anymore, so we can scratch that. So we basically have one, uh, we're eliminating one variation of all these and we are, we are, we're eliminating two variations. One is the, the height of the, of the, of the garage, that's, um, and changing it to a, to a pitched roof. And then we're eliminating the rear yard impervious surface variation. So can, are we ready to make a motion on this? And then, somebody do that?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I guess I thought I heard, uh, that three variations would be eliminated, including the two that Reinhard just mentioned, the fifty-seven point two-one total floor area variation. Is that also eliminated, Lisa?
Um...
The total floor area variation?
I don't believe that it is.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
And I have a clarification, Lisa. For the lot coverage, if you're looking at the page three in the middle, the requirements, so the per, the new proposed number is what, total?
New proposed?
Three ninety-eight.
Uh, the new variation difference is ninety-eight. So that would be, um...
Yeah, it says the proposed here, two thousand twenty-nine. Are you taking like three ninety from that?
Taking fifty...
No.
Yeah, I still don't understand how that can be five hundred feet. Like John said, there's, uh, with, if that counts the existing garage, how does it go up by five hundred?
I think the original, the calculations for the existing area, uh, did not include the, um...
Existing garage?
I'm sorry, the existing house. Did not include the, the seven-foot, um, step back in the back. I think the depth was calculated without that, um, even though it's obviously there. So I think the difference is that, that seven feet across.
Yeah, I just have a difficult time approving... Yeah, I just have a difficult time approving something where the numbers aren't accurate.
I, I would agree with that.
Well, um, we can, we can, um, we can post proposals, we'll be meeting next week, um, and we can try to, um, verify these numbers if, as would, um, make this a legitimate applicant's request.
Can you put it, is there room for, come on the agenda for next week?
We have a full agenda of five cases, but there are several that are, um, there are a couple that seem to be, in my estimation, smaller.
Just a question, because the basement or the, the first floor is how far above grade, so the basement counts, does it?
No, it does not.
Yeah.
It does not?
It does not.
No.
David, is there any way to, to verify the amount of the, that the dormer is adding and the front gable is adding on the second floor? Because I think that's...
Yeah, the front gable doesn't add any FAR.
Okay.
If we're gonna, if we're gonna approve this, I, I think we need the right numbers. I think deferring this to next week makes all the sense in the world because I think what you're hearing is if we don't have...
Sure.
You know, and if we can't slap it together in ten minutes, I'm not going to have a lot of, here that we do, I'm not going to have a lot of confidence that we did it right.
Understood.
So I think it makes more sense to defer it for a week, get the right numbers and we shouldn't need a lot of discussion next week once we have the right numbers.
And the good news is we are meeting next week, normally we wouldn't be.
Right, that's right.
So, for what little value that is.
That's right. All right, people agree, so you should, and, and, does the, the applicant agree, uh, with deferring this to next week?
No, I think that's fair and reasonable.
Okay, can I have a motion then? A motion for what?
Sorry.
Continue?
Okay, should I continue to July first, please?
I know in a matter of two twenty Z fourteen, we, uh, continue this until July first, uh, zoning board meeting, uh, beginning at seven thirty.
Seven o'clock?
I'll second that.
Okay, do we need to take a, please?
Yep, Mr., uh, Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Pellison?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Joe Irvin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So this, uh, will be deferred until our next meeting on July first and thank you on this case. Is there anyone else that we haven't heard from that wants to speak about something? Lisa?
Um, I don't see anybody with a public address.
Okay, so can I, uh, move to adjourn, can we motion to adjourn?
Do we have any meeting minutes to, to approve or no?
No. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.
You have to vote on that. Thank you.
We need a motion and a roll call.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Yes.
I'll second it. Take the roll.
Mr. Joe Irvin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pellison?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes, is this a new procedure, Lisa?
This is our online procedure, yes.
Lot line procedure, okay, all right.
Roger.
All right, thank you guys.